Good afternoon, everyone. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it is located on the Treaty Six territory and Maite Nation Region Number Four. These are the traditional territories and ancestral lands of the indigenous peoples, including the Plains Cree First Nations, Assinawoochee, Winawat, Rocky Mountains First Nations, Stony, Tucina, Nakota, Donaisuline, Soto, Mountain Maite, the Chief, and many other communities that continue to enrich the land on which the town of Hinton was established. With that sentiment, I will call this meeting to order. Council, is there any change to our agenda? Seeing none, Administration, any change? Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, Administration, if the if the committee were willing would ask to add, and I do apologize for this, an additional closed session item that I would propose as seven point three. So we would move C A O transition to seven point four. And seven point three would read as preliminary update Town of Hinton's service level review.
Okay, thank you, sir. And anything else? Seeing nothing. So Council, we do have a amended agenda. May I have a motion to adopt?
Oh.
Okay, and Counselor Taylor has adopted our agenda.
That's a question.
Yes, okay.
So that service level review, is there like a detailed discussion involved in that? Is there a detailed document that we're going to get? Madam Chair, through you, there is not a detailed document yet. It's actually comes over the telephone conversation with the consultant this afternoon. Thank you. Thank you.
Would you like to adopt?
I think we'll adopt.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor has adopted our agenda? Yes, sir.
Sorry, I'm sure we need to vote.
I'm sorry?
We need to vote.
Yeah, oh, good, thank you so much. And with that, we will take a vote on adopting the agenda. All those in favor? And none opposed, that is passed. Citizens, minute with Council. Jen, do we have anyone?
There are none.
There are none today? And do we have any delegations and presentations?
There are none.
And there are none? We only have one report from Administration. And that would be five point one, lunch. Is that going to everybody else?
It's, it'll stop right away.
So our report from Administration was five point one. That is land acknowledgement statement revision and policy number eleven one zero. And that's from Administration.
Madam Chair, we're on page three, excuse me, of your agenda package for the committee. And with that, I'll ask the author Heather Mark to take us through and to share this with you, and we are available for any questions that the committee members may have.
Thank you, no, I see, I go. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, committee. And thank you all for the opportunity to speak to this item. Members of committee will recall that we established a counselor-driven working committee in the spring of this year to revise the land acknowledgement statement currently in use by the town. The working committee met preliminarily to draft the statement, after which point counselor race conducted extensive engagement within the community. And then during the secondary meeting of the committee, we adopted a policy stipulating the use of the statements and stating a revision schedule of three years and attaching the statement itself as an appendix. This is attachment one to your report this afternoon. Administration presently seeks direction on the policy advising that committee direct council to accept the policy as presented during the September thirteenth meeting of regular. At this instance, I invite Madam Chair to speak more to her process of conducting community engagement on the statements and how we arrived at this statement before committee this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to say it was extensive, but it was not as extensive as I had hoped it would be. So I had ten people that I initially wanted to see. I was able to touch bases with three of these people, and I think our sessions combined was probably five to six hours. The, what I did is I showed the people our current statement and the one that we came up with at the council meeting. And the one that we came up at our committee meeting is the one that everybody really took a look at and took out words that they weren't comfortable with. We added words that they were. So without us, there are any questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just you may want to identify who one of the consultants was that you had talked to? Because I think that also establishes some credibility for the folks who were involved in that.
Okay, so I'll, thank you very much. So the three that I did spend time with right now, one was Rocky Naughtness from Entrance Ranch. He led me on to Chief Jimmy O'Cheese. He made a phone call to Jimmy and Jimmy traveled up to Hinton the following day, and we spent quite a bit of time talking about this. And then the third person I talked to was Judy Littlejohn. And I'll tell you, the information that I received was just unreal. It truly was. And yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess from my own part, one of the things that felt really good was that our initial draft copy, and everybody seen it in the report, the initial draft copy that we developed comparative to where it sort of ended up after we had some of that stakeholder feedback, felt good because, I mean, obviously there were some changes, but I don't think anything that was really terribly substantial, I think. So all in all, what that felt like was that we were definitely on the right track at that point in time, I think, ready for council's discussion and dissemination.
And you know something that I think is really important right now, and I hope Counselor McGee that you will read, you know, what, you know, our final version ended up being. But we will have from now until, if this is accepted, to go to regular council, we will have that time to interact with people in the community and get their seat on this land acknowledgement statement. So would you, would you mind reading what we came up?
If, if council doesn't mind, I mean, I don't want to read to somebody if they don't want me to, but if you want somebody to read aloud, I will. No exceptions. So we came up with the Town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it is located on the First Peoples' traditional lands. We recognize this traditional territory to show respect and understanding to those who walked this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties with all First Peoples and nations that call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come.
Thank you, sir. So Council, any, any more discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'll move that committee direct council accept the draft land acknowledgement policy C L eleven ten as presented.
Thank you, sir.
If I can speak to it.
Yes.
Quite simply, I want to thank everyone who was part of this. This is obviously not my expertise to get into it and to solicit feedback and to build something that the community is comfortable and happy with is what I'll support. So as Counselor McGee said, we still have some time to solicit feedback, and I look forward to it, and if changes are needed, then so be it. And if not, what I've heard so far that it's very accurate and good, so I'm quite happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor?
Did we talk to the folks at the Friendship Center?
I phoned the Friendship Center. I did get a lead on someone at Small Boys Camp. They, I contacted that person. They were not able to speak to me at that time. I did call another person whose name I was given. And I really apologize, I was calling on the weekend to talk to people, and that was not a, a good time to you know, for them to have a discussion with me. So I didn't reach out to them, but did not talk to anybody specifically from the Friendship Center.
They didn't want to give comments?
No, I think it was just an inopportune time when I, when I called them. But I would, what I like to think right now is, because we do have something, we do have our hard copy, something that we've come up with. If you think this now too. So Council, anything else before I call the question? And seeing none. The committee direct council accept the draft land acknowledgement policy C L one 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 zero as presented. All those in favor? And that is passed. Okay, and right now, I guess we're moving on to our, oh, Counselor Taylor.
Mr. Martin, point is the intent to have this appendix one attached to this land acknowledgement policy?
The
This one, this.
Or action handed ones?
No, no, the land acknowledgement statement appendix one is that, is that, is that part of this policy?
If I may, through Madam Chair to Counselor Taylor, yes, it's an appendix to the policy.
Is there a reference here that says that this appendix is part of this contingency? Should be that there, maybe there's, I just can't see.
I'm sure.
Counselor McGee?
I believe seven point one on page two of three of the policy or page, sorry, I'm looking at it on this small font.
Seven of six.
Seven and sixteen, yeah.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you. And you're good?
Good.
Okay. Okay, so we have no more reports from Administration. We will go on to council reports, and I will start with Counselor Taylor.
Nothing official to report. Unfortunately, tonight's school, my lead is suspended in the best way that a rec center needs to. So you, no. So he's lived, Dr. Duncan Murray, lived his whole life. You know, contributed to this town both in a professional and a sports-related capacity. Sad news. But good news that he's lived his whole life and he's kind of a celebrational life versus a funeral.
Thank you for letting us know. Thank you. Counselor LaBerge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. And Counselor McGee?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Counselor Haas? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No committee reports, just a successful mayor's golf tournament raising close to $10,000 for bridges and yes, so always a great time, although we got rained out after vote fourteen. But it was so excessive that it kind of made it pretty cool and fun. So great money going to, you know, to great organizations, and that's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, sir. So on Wednesday, I attended the Hidden Historical Society meeting on behalf of Counselor Taylor. At that meeting, a motion was made to ask the Town of Hinton to move forward with discussions on how
That's a dollar fine.
Excuse me, and I will certainly pay it. So a motion was made to ask the Town of Hinton to move forward with discussions on how the valuation process works and what the costs associated with that would be. So I think right now you're all saying, well, what the heck? Jerry, oh.
Too much.
The valuation process was asked for because I believe this is being done because the Hidden Historical Society may be bringing a motion forward to council to take over the building and grounds. I'm not saying that's happening a hundred percent, but that is a reason that they're asking for this valuation report. And if Administration wants to speak on this, I would gladly accept that. Um, so, yes, sir.
Sorry, to clarify, valuation report, who will we be expecting to evaluate? Like, they're looking to do a report on the building to bring the council, what it costs and all that, or what is it about, who's doing the valuation or?
So my understanding is that that Hidden Historical has asked the town to find out who would do the, I think, the evaluation on the building and who would be paying for that evaluation. Would it be the museum would pay for it, would the town pay for it? Yes.
So if I may follow up to C I C O M line, currently, right now, we have, other than the funding that we provide, merely, we have no information on all that stuff, correct? Like, it would, it would be an evaluation by the group to find if that's the case, we meant it's not just one of the town.
Madam Chair, through you to Member Haas, to the whole of the committee members. This is actually not something I've heard from, from the museum yet. So we are committed through the 2022 budget for our contribution as a civic agency. And anything further and beyond that, I would, I would certainly be hoping and looking to discuss that with the leadership of the museum, but if not, I don't, I can't speak to this further at this time. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that was the, um, big. Yes.
Um. So presumably they want us to take over the buildings so we can cover the insurance and the upkeep and all that. So valuation report have to do with that.
You know, I'm hoping, Heather, would you be able to speak to any part of that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My current understanding for the valuation report, we want to know as an organization exactly what this asset entails in terms of the upkeep or what we would be paying for if we were going to own the facility.
That's what that will come.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So if the museum decides that they would like to move forward with considering the town ownership of the building to help cover with maintenance costs, because the county is not interested in doing it. They have a conversation about autonomy regarding provision of services, of course, that we know with other civic agencies. Does that answer your question, Counselor Taylor?
Well, that's maybe more confused, I'm sorry.
No, of course.
Surely the museum already knows that they're paying for that stuff, so they could just produce their records in the last year and say this much paid for this upkeep, for this upkeep, for this upkeep.
Due to the financial situation of the museum, it appears as such that they have not done consistent reporting on the state of the structure at this instance, because it can be quite expensive. So when the museum is slated to come before council or committee of the whole on the twenty fifth of October, as a civic agency, they will have at that point decided whether or not they want to consider in their agreement to council for the following funding year in the cycle, whether or not that'll be feasible. Because it's very unlikely that they would be able to come up with the funds to do it on their own. So it'll be a further ask. And then when they have the presentation, they've got seven minutes to make their sell to council, in which case we can decide whether or not, or you all can decide whether or not that would be feasible for the organization.
Excellent, that's a good heads up for October. Thank you very much.
Counselor LaBerge?
October twenty fifth.
Wait. That, those dates suck because we got to start budgeting. We're talking the end of October. Is there any way we could do this stuff and talk to civic agencies in September? Beginning of October, because for us to try and plow all that stuff in the last week of October is insane. We can, we can't give these people any consideration for what they come to us with because you've got set three weeks. You, you have seven minutes. And that's it. And then the next one comes in, because it, like, starting this third week in October, in my own opinion, doesn't work. I would really like to see these guys in September.
Is that question directed to Administration?
Well, I was, I was asking about the question, or the date. I'm sorry, October twenty sixth, the end of October.
If I may, through Madam Chair to you, Counselor, because we have approximately a dozen civic partnerships. We have three that are going to give a presentation on September twenty seventh at committee. Another three that would go to the committee on October eleventh. And then the final three, the ones identified as potentially needing more time, because the historical board only meets monthly, and they have to consider whether or not they want to do the ask for the town ownership. As a courtesy, I gave them until October twenty fifth. I have not sent the complete communication to the historical board. I figured it would be preferable to members of council that we have these delegations during committee since we want to build efficiency during council meetings. I could schedule them so they come to, what would it be in October? Anything before September twenty seventh to get the agreements in order on Administration's end? I don't want to go. Sooner than that's. We could do.
And listen, that was just my comment. I mean, I owe everybody else that goal that we're doing at the end of October.
Madam Chair, if I could, through you to the members of the committee, I do appreciate Heather's leadership on this and and again, just to clarify, we do have a number of agencies spread out over three committee of the whole meetings. What I would suggest and is that the director of corporate services, I take a look at the schedule and see if it's possible to, we're going to keep you very busy in September as well on the budget, so we'll take a look at this and perhaps take a look with Heather to see those that are, I think we know that some of our agencies are forgive me, a little more stable than others, and those that are possibly are going to need a little more consideration and discussion, I think probably we should try and get them to council earlier, to your point, sir, rather than later. So if, if council is the committee, we're okay with this. I would suggest we have a meeting, we take a look at the schedule, we've got it, see if it's possible moving forward. I'm not going to commit that we can do that, because there's been a lot of work getting this far with our civic agencies, but we'll take a look at.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mayor Michaels.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, my, my question would just be to Administration, is October twenty five fine to streamline it with the budget? Because that is earlier than before. We were getting some in November and December in past years. Maybe October twenty fifth is fine. I guess that's the question. Logistically, if Administration can comment that will work, then maybe we don't even have to rush it. I just, if, if there's a plan in place for it to, 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 to work with us passing a budget, then I'm fine with October twenty fifth. But you, Administration would know, not me, so I, I don't want to force this ahead if it doesn't need to be. I think the question has to be answered. Is October twenty five great to work with our budget cycle?
Sir, or Madam Chair, through you to Mayor Michaels, to the whole of the committee. Honestly, I believe just in, in speaking with the finance department is we are in a much better position in our, our budget preparation than we've been for the last three budget cycles. And so we've got stability. Doesn't mean we can't take a look and revisit the schedule to make sure that we're giving ourselves adequate time and not pushing this too far into the end of the year, but the director and Heather and I will take a look at that.
Thank you.
Counselor Haas?
Yeah, I'll speak up to this too, as, as comes with the merge. As I'm, to me, it's way earlier than usual, and then here that we are going to be working on budget in September, looking at the, you know, the big picture, right? And then having these, you know, to look at the nuts and bolts of, you know, the budget for the community, and then having those to also consider, you know, what can we afford for these groups as well? So I think, you know, based on that and the fact that, yeah, as Mayor Michael said, you know, we've in the past had them coming in November, I think October gives us ample time to consider everything put all together and then make a final decision on that. So, I mean, granted, if we can get it earlier, but I too don't want to push it. I think this is, that's a, that's a reasonable amount of time. Plus, we've got other business to do to hear that we have three civic agencies coming to us during our committee of the whole meeting, plus other business. I think that's a reasonable also consideration as well, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. So typically, our reporting, council reporting does not generate this kind of conversation. I felt though that hearing this news at that meeting, this is information that council certainly would want to have prior to this group coming to us. Some other news from the Hidden Historical Society is the gift shop did a wonderful amount of selling the month of July. They did very, very well, and that's good, because they need that money. So that was Wednesday. Then on Sunday, I was, our dear mayor could not attend the art show at the museum, so I stepped in as deputy mayor. I'll tell you, it was one of the nicest events that I have been. The, the, all the artists that were there, all the art that was presented, the the smiling faces, the, the split was if you buy a painting, eighty percent goes to the artist, ten percent would go to the museum, and ten percent would go elsewhere. And they raised just over $400, and that's good, I think. So very, very good. And anytime you want me to appear as deputy mayor, I'll certainly do my On Monday, I attended the ASH meeting. They have entertainers booked for October and November. Hidden Movies had a very good summer, and the deal will be hosting an event for novice, and that would be September twenty third, eight o'clock in the morning, nine thirty at night. So, and that's my Okay.
So I did.
Yes, sir.
If I may, forgot to mention, excuse me, in talking about the Historical Society and the connection with the youth council as well. Last night, apparently, the storm did not help our book or garden that much. But we are getting produce from it. So today on, on our communications that a bag of beans and a bag of peas have been donated to the, to the food bank. So that was our plan for it, so we're continuing to work on it. The students are doing their best to try to be there, but some are, you know, other activities and events take over. So I want to thank Margaret over there, the manager of the Historical Society, and anyone else that can make it. But just wanted to mention that it is producing, so, but the storm didn't help prepare for some of this.
Thank you, Counselor Haas, very much. Um, okay, Chief Administrator, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Reported, so two items to report. Please to confirm that the Gerard Redman the pickleball court, which we've been waiting to resurface, as luck would have it, was, they mobilized to the site yesterday morning. They prepped the sites, and then two events happened yesterday, yesterday afternoon and last night, as we're all aware. And they're now re-prepping the, the site. So the good, the good news is they hadn't applied anything yet, but they, they're a little bit delayed. They do hope to have that work in resurfacing the pickleball courts done by the end of the week or end of the weekend now, possibly with that delay. Also, Gerard Redman, the, the crossing improvements in around the school area and on Mountain Street continue to be on track. We ran into a little bit of issue with some undergrounds, it's power lines that rode around. But we do anticipate having that installation and improvements completed before the commencement of the school year. Administration, it will be myself, is meeting with Hidden Children's Learning Center to tour their facility. They continue to wish to work with the town on expanding their footprint and have some ideas that they'd like to bring forward to, to council later in the budget process. And so I've agreed to, to tour the site with them. From a status reports, the tactical plan did land on my desk, and most of the staff have done a great job kind of filling in their, their portions of that plan. It is my intent to have that completed next week and shared with council. It will be very important for council to see it, to understand it, and of course, to catch up, if you will, and inform the development of our 2023 budget process. So glad to be getting that wrapped up. I have a number of inquiries on the status of the Hinton Center lease. I can share with council, but we will be making an announcement on that shortly. So that will need more details to follow on that one. And oh, there had been an inquiry on the spray park. So again, the, there were some shade structures ordered and budgeted for on the spray park. They did show up the early part of last week. I know we all tire of supply chain discussions, but this was a genuine supply chain issue, so the materials did show up. Admin, or Public Works is working with contractors. We are going to essentially get the structures erected this year. But our plan now, since we usually wrap up operations of the spray park the second and third week of September, is we will not likely put the sales up this year simply to take them down a couple of days later. But it's, the intent is to have the structures installed this year, and then it'd just be a matter of Public Works putting the sales on those structures next spring when we open.
Thank you, sir. And Counselor Haas?
Yeah, about the, thank you for the update on that. I guess it brought, brought to mind a conversation we had a year ago in regards to the budget. And there was conversation in regards to the graduating committee. And there was conversation in regards to the graduating committee, that there was, um, when there was a shift over from the school running it and there was a separate committee, they were looking to, um. I don't know if they create a donation or what, but there would be monies left over that they were looking towards putting towards that project. But at the time, they were having a hard time gathering their people to come up with how, what that number is. Has administration had any conversation? Has there any thing been ironed out in regards to that? Because at the time, I believe it was twenty-five thousand potentially that they would have in their bank account, looking for someplace for it to go. Because they aren't doing those graduations anymore. So any comment on that or?
Madam Chair, I, I, I was not aware of this, so I'll, if, uh, if the committee member will allow, I'll follow up with my staff to see if we've heard anything further on that. And that's the, that's the high school graduation committee.
Yeah, it was, uh, we, we, Counselor Bugu knows more than I do about it. My kids is through school, so I didn't know that he would be able to probably comment.
Madam Chair, yeah. Uh, yeah, it was, um, prom used to be run by a separate parental organization.
Yeah.
Uh, and in the last several years, it shifted to the high school, uh, runs it in between the kids and the staff and some parent volunteers, but they work through the school. Um, and that, that, the original committee, which was strictly, uh, parents and done outside of the school. They had, as, as Counselor Haas had mentioned, a substantial amount of money, I suppose, that they were looking to utilize for, for public projects.
Um, i- if I could and possibly in conjunction with the ongoing budget process, we'll reach out and see if there's something further on this that can be of benefit for any project this year or possible projects in the future that we can partner with. With the count, with that council and, uh, I'll update, uh, we'll update, uh, committee.
Madam Chair, if I could.
I'm sure. Sir.
I just have one other question about the Gerard, the, the, the lights going up. I found it interesting, was walking by there the other day, that the post is gonna be in the street as opposed to on the other side of the sidewalk and, and I'm not sure where the other one is going. I'm assuming in the street, because there's not as much room over there, but I guess my concern is it kind of narrows up that area a little bit. Um, was that what you were talking about with some of the underground issues that? Because I just am comparing it to the Mountain View one, where that goes on the other sides of the sidewalk and over, where this one seems to be gonna be in the street and, and over.
Madam Chair, if, if I could, I, actually, if Winston, he, he is here with us and if the, uh, Director of Infrastructure could share with us, I, I'm not familiar with, with the, the details of this as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what is, turns out is that initially it should have been sort of behind the sidewalk. But we found, so even the locates did not pick up the super net that goes to the school. And so when we really got digging, we had to make an onsite adjustment. So the onsite adjustment is really based on that. Actually, it may not look right right now, but it's actually, so we've got eight meters edge to edge of curb. Once you've got that little island that are just now, so you've got your four, you need about three and a half meters to be a called width. So you've got the, you've got that, so we made sure that that wasn't compromised. But what this does is is that we will have road narrowing signs that will show on either approach. The other thing that we'll be doing is is that we'll be ensuring that every post is illuminated with a tape. Um, you know, luminous tape. The other part of that is is that you now have a better pedestrian refuge where the kid or the person crossing now stands there, the car will be, oh, it's getting narrow. So you have that effect of slowing down even further, you should be slower that way. So we, we are actually doing this like a Dutch model, where if you go to the hall and you will see that they have this road narrowing. So that's a shared street with play and vehicle interaction. So it was definitely intended to design it that way, but that's how it fell off, because we were so constricted with all the utilities that were in that area. It wasn't even picked up, we did the locates at the time we got here. So hence the bump outs that you see.
Thank you.
So we'll be flaring sort of the curb line around that. The other part of that is is that if you've had major stormwater issues, you can't put a pipe through there to try and drain it. It will freeze, will eventually crack and you get all the concrete. So you'll have double troubles. So basically design the water to flow through a flat approach around it and also the snow removal. We had to make sure that we don't have sharp edges, otherwise you just left the curve and then you've got a worse situation and that. So that's what we're kinda doing. The other thing I will add is that we had more on the opposite side of Mountain Street. We were going to shift those lights to the opposite side. She had a kit on one side. That didn't work out, because we had a massive short cable, I mean, chamber on that point. So even wanted to shift the hole on that end, you were going into almost the back of another tree. So now that will stay, but you'll see the center island with added, and that will have some more open assigning. So as you come up, the side distance will allow you to see what is this. So the improvement will ninety-eight percent achieve what we wanted to achieve initially on Mountain Street. So just a few modifications we had to do to make it still come out right.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Counselor, are you good?
Yep.
Counselor Hall.
The straight part of Ashfall Service is both holes and chunks of ash gold all over. This is the last time I walked there. Was there any plan for that? Um, Madam Chair, through you to remember, I, I believe it's the rubberized surface, if I'm not mistaken. And I will follow up with council, but the last time we had an inquiry on that, we were waiting for the contractor to mobilize to Intum and we had some repairs in another location, and they were gonna make the repairs here as well. Uh, so if, if it's not yet done, the intention is it will be done this year.
Thank you, and I will put you in. So I just have one question for, um, Mr. Russo in regards to the crosswalk, if I may. So are you saying that the crosswalk will not be situated west of where it is right now?
That's correct, yes. That's right. So we'll turn the tree a little bit to make sure that it's on the panel, it can actually, uh, the light itself. And we will try and make that a luminous pole as well with some reflective ice tape on.
Thank you. Counselor Ross?
Yeah, just one more quick question, as we're talking about infrastructure. We've had a number of areas that needed to be dug up. In this year, there was some over on Tammerack, there's some over on, uh, by the Legion there or that Pembina area. There's been some question why they haven't been paved yet, so I'm assuming either two things from the past, to let it settle a bit and work at it or wait until everything is done and try to pave it all at the same time, you know, because contractors are busy. But any comment on, you know, when we might, is that something that's gonna be finished this year or are we looking more next year? Just if you can comment on that.
Yep, to the Chairman of the Chair, um, both aspects are correct, wants to allow it to settle. But the greatest thing that's driving this is the actual contractors will not come and do these small patches at the wood. We tried to, even the guys who did the highway patching, to try and see if we could just lump it into theirs. But they were already gonna move on and they didn't have time for some water paving, has got it on their radar to do. Um, the, the chance of getting it done is eighty-five percent right now this year, if we get an early winter. However, we could do a cold patch just to make sure that the rotting that you see that's happening, I just throw it over there, I came here. Um, to, to make sure that that doesn't happen. So we'll probably have a cold patch, worst case scenario, but we wanna have it fixed, otherwise you get the pretty small. And then that's huge, you know, and the one we don't dealing with right now.
Yeah, because I recall the one in front of the post office took a while, but that was a big reason to have the contractor run it. Just so the community knows, it's, it's being worked on, it's just not something that can happen so quickly. So thanks, thanks, administration.
Thank you, Counselor Ross. Um, C A O, would you like to, um, speak to our action pending list?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Page nine of your agenda package is the council action pending list. It's five pages in length. Administration is available to answer any questions regarding those pending items. And then the, uh, the second item, our, our complete list is three pages in length and starts on page fourteen. And happy to answer any questions or, uh, provide details or updates on any of these matters. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, my question for administration is perhaps an update on M D twenty-two oh two, the uh, all wheel park, um, where, where kind of is that? Are we waiting for, um, them to contact us? If not, uh, is there any, any info on that?
Sorry, Mayor, which page are you on? Okay, um. The last update I had on this from administration, and this goes back quite a ways, was we were waiting to hear from this group. And in fact, I understood that if the group did not approach us this year, we would likely in two thousand twenty-three be coming back to council to suggest we remove this, because there was not the community support for this moving forward. Now, this was a couple of months ago, uh, but since then, I've not heard anything different from Heather, that they've come and contacted us or uh, looking to move this forward at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Ross?
Yeah, and I'll do this, because I know that as a youth council, um, we actually approached that group. Uh, I know, uh, Ms. uh, Mark approached them, because we were looking for volunteer possibilities for the youth group, uh, or for the youth council. But unfortunately, at that time, I believe the correspondence that Heather, Ms. Mark received was, it kind of really was, it wasn't going anywhere. Uh, the, the, the input, the volunteers and everything at that time, there was no movement forward on any, any fundraising or anything like that at that time, and that was at the beginning of youth council. So, um, yeah, that, and that was from the leader who came to council. Um, and say that they just weren't, I think it was just him, that they couldn't find anybody else to, to work with them. So, uh, that's where we, that's all that we found about it.
If I may, Madam Chair, through the rest of council presence. So this item came before the previous council in March of twenty twenty-one. At which point, following S L T analysis for the project, it was anticipated that the first year, that group just needed access to the land of Eric Park for the opportunity to pursue grant funding. And once the park was built, this asset would be incorporated under the town and we would take care of maintenance. As Counselor Haas has already iterated, there was not much movement from that group. And the previous counselor Nelson had given this individual or this nonprofit forty-eight months in which to make movements. So the anticipation for this year, I have them slated as a civic agency. They do not currently have an agreement, but I have to reach out to this individual and see what the process is, what their progress is, if there's going to need to be an agreement or if this project will fall.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ross. Um, any more discussion on our action pending list council? And seeing none, we're going to go into a closed session. I would need a motion to go into closed session. Counselor Ross?
We'll then we go into closed session with a seven minute.
And all those in favor? Thank you very much.
That's three dollars.
Thank you. Welcome back to our, um, Committee of the Whole Meeting. Counsel, do we have any directions coming? Counselors. Counselor Ross?
I'd like to move that on the second item, that committee recommend council approve a monetary mandate for the collective bargaining between the town of Intum and Uniform Local E fifty-five as discussed in a closed session.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any discussion on this? So we have a direction on the floor, all those in favor? And counsel, um, another direction? Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move that council accept, or that committee accept, uh, the twenty twenty-two work disruption plan for information.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion on this? Yes, sir.
Uh, I won't be supporting the, the direction on the floor, not because I, I think the plan that has discussed with council is in any way bad or anything of issue. It's simply, I don't believe it's the, uh, generally the practice of council to, uh, support or not support work plans of, uh, administration. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, we have a direction before us. All those in favor?
Let me just see the wording first before, because it has changed from what it was in the option to that council except, just to make sure that Jim captures that.
Have we better do that for both or just the last one? Thank you. Uh, the direction is that committee accept the work disruption.
The, the twenty twenty-two.
The committee accept the twenty twenty-two work disruption plan report for information. All those in favor? And opposed? Let's carry with one, um, opposed. Yes, sir.
I'd like to move that we go back into closed session.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Um, sir, did you have a? Okay, and all those in favor?